The May Phoenix City Council Neighborhoods Housing and Development Subcommittee. Glad to have everyone here. At our last meeting, we did a lot of work related to graffiti and it was wonderful to have the Graffiti International Conference since then, so thank you to everyone who was involved with that and was working to address that issue in our city. And now I would entertain a motion to approve the meeting minutes from our April 15th meeting.
Motion to approve.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 We have a standing presentation or standing information on the Phoenix Homeless Initiative and all the work we are doing to address homelessness in our city, so there's information in the packet. There's no formal presentation planned at this meeting, but we have staff available for questions. Does anyone have any questions on that issue? I do not have any cards on the homelessness issue. Wonderful, then we will go straight into our work on the Phoenix Parklet Policy. Welcome staff up to address that issue. Is that right? Oh, I'm sorry, golf issues.
Madam Chair, Subcommittee Members, as you know, this committee heard this issue early on at the request of Councilman DeCecio, and now we're back to report the results of a very engaged public process with the villages, and I'll turn it over to Alan and Sandy to tell you all about it.
Thank you, Rick. Madam Chair, members of the Subcommittee, in short, you'll recall, this is the issue to address the use of temporary fences around golf courses that are closed or will be closing shortly to address the use of temporary fencing to create blight within the community. So with that, as Rick mentioned, you have heard this a couple of times and talked about it, so we'll let Ms. Hoffman jump right into the presentation, and then we'll talk a little bit more about the village votes and the public hearing process that's been on to date at the end.
Good morning. Madam Chair, Subcommittee Members, the text amendment that we're moving forward, again, addresses many different things, including primarily temporary fencing in Section 703 of the zoning ordinance, and also as well, some fencing around the perimeter of golf courses. So what the text amendment is doing, as it went forward through the TAC and the various village planning committees, is to have language that would ensure that we clearly define the time limits for the temporary fencing. It also establishes a use permit provision for fencing around the perimeter of a golf course, especially when there's residential zoning districts around it. It also mitigates some of the concerns that may occur if that were to happen, as well as it mandates a 50-foot perimeter setback for the temporary fencing. The text amendment also includes language where the applicant has to provide a landscape plan, so we can know the inventory of plant material along the perimeter of the golf course, and as well as justifying the needs for that perimeter fencing. But the text amendment also allows anybody with a golf course to put a temporary fence around a safety hazard or a building, so that is by right. They don't need to have any kind of hearing for that. So for example, on the graphic that's shown on the screen, if you have a water feature and you have the red line around it, you could have a temporary fence around a water feature. It's a safety hazard, a sand trap or a building. They can have that by right without any public hearing. But if you want to do the green line that's around the full perimeter of that golf course and adjacent, especially next to residential homes, you need a use permit, because then you can have the opportunity for the neighbors to have a voice. What it also does is it prohibits the ability to have barbed wire or concertina wire on these eight-foot-high temporary fences if they're visible from a residential home or from the right-of-way. So that would also be included in this text amendment. So what the feedback we got during the various public hearings included, are you singling out golf courses? Well, there are open spaces throughout the city that we have that probably will not have development on it. So you may have preserved land, you've got some established open spaces. They're not a concern. It's the golf courses that we've had some challenges with, where they want to close them and put residences there. So again, it's addressing a concern that we're currently having. Also, discussion was about trapping the debris that exists in there, maintenance challenges, and a suggestion that perhaps we should only limit the temporary fencing to the ingress and egress points. This text amendment does not eliminate that option. A developer for a golf course could choose to close off the ingress and egress. We're not stopping that option. So based on the feedback we got during the public hearing, staff recommended a modification to the text amendment language, and basically what we're going to do is to allow the zoning adjustment hearing officer to have some flexibility in the amount of distance that we're going to have that perimeter fence from the residential zoning area. So again, that will give a voice for the public to come forward, to express their concerns, as well as the zoning adjustment hearing officer having the ability to have some authority to modify that. With the submittal requirements we have for the use permit, we're going to have a landscape plan provided, so we'll have the inventory of the plant material, as well as information from the applicant as to rationale as to what is the current hazardous conditions for the land, for the buildings, and for the golf course amenities. So with that information, our zoning adjustment hearing officer can make a very informed decision regarding the proposal. So with that, be glad to answer any questions. Thank you.
Madam Chair, if I could, real quick, I just want to provide an update on the village planning committee actions today. You had some information in your packets about it, and it has been going through the process. And so as of today, it's been approved by four village planning committees. It's been denied by six, however, one of them is going to reconsider on June 2nd. One village decided not to make a recommendation, that's Desert View, and before the full council takes action on 6/4, we'll get votes. The Calback East Village is going to reconsider it. Estrella will hear it tonight. Paradise Valley Village will hear it on 6/2, and the Rio Vista Village will hear it on 5/27. So in preparation to getting here, it was offered to all of the village planning committees for them to hear it. A couple of them did not have a quorum at the time, or elected to pass on it and see what other villages did before they came back to vote on it. That was one of the things that South Mountain Village did, for example. They passed the first time, but then when it came back around to them, they did vote on it. With that, happy to answer any questions.
Yes. Councilwoman Pastor.
So my question, and that was, I'm glad you clarified that, because I wanted to, there's several of them that continued it, and the ones that didn't have a quorum, we have the ability within this time span for them to go back and review the new modifications and be able to have a voice by the time we vote for it. If that's what I'm hearing?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
If I could, just as an explanation too, staff, well, this is one of the things that everybody in the city of Phoenix is going to face at one point or another. I mean, every district's going to face it. Councilman Valenzuela already has it. Councilman Gaiego, you have certain golf courses in your district as well that may or may not come up, and there's going to be more and more pressure for people to use golf courses and develop them out, because they don't feel that they can maximize their profits on the golf course, is really what it comes down to. And it comes down to where they think that they might be able to use it, and that's an individual's right to make those determinations. But what they've done in the past, and it's been pretty much typical throughout, is what they'll do is they'll use blighted situations in order to derive and get concessions from neighbors, and that's just what occurs. So the idea is to take that as much as possible off of the table. And so if you look at the basics of what this proposal puts together, one, the idea of even putting razor wire in a neighborhood just doesn't make sense. I mean, it just literally takes the razor wire off. It still allows fencing to occur. The other part, which is, I think, a critical, especially if you preserve and believe in open space and want to preserve some of that, and the beauty of trees and plants, it requires them to be able to put a landscaping plan in place, which is logical, because right now, there's no way of them or for us to be able to chart what is and what isn't there, so we can see if they're allowing those plants to die off. We can't go back a year later and say, well, wait a second, you had a big tree here, and that now died off, and what happened there? So it allows, basically, just to keep track of what's happening. And then the other, we've talked about this on other issues, you always have a visibility corridor that you want to preserve as open space. Right now, the current ordinance says that you can pretty much put a fence line right up to a street line and right behind someone's home, and it just doesn't seem to be, you know, very cordial to be able to do something like that. And in any neighborhood, that becomes the visibility of the property. Doesn't prevent anybody from being able to close down their course at all. It doesn't prevent anybody from being able to do construction work. It literally sets in place the ability to, anything that has an extreme hazard that gets fenced off already, they're allowed to do that. And it gives the zoning hearing officer an incredible amount of latitude to be able to judge each case individually. So one case may be, you know, where they require it a certain way, and then others may not be as much, depending on what the use is. So it's very, I want to commend staff for all the work that they did on it, and I'm going to put a motion on the table and move this forward to the council, so that we can get the other villages on board. I know Calback East, they didn't understand it, is what I heard, and maybe we can go back to some of the other villages as well with another explanation. So I'm going to make a motion, move it forward.
I still have some additional questions about the 50-foot setback, so do you mind if we?
No, go ahead.
It seems like the villages had concerns on the 50-foot setback from both, it was too much regulation and too little, and can you speak a little bit about the proposed changes and flexibility of the zoning hearing officer?
Certainly. Madam Chair, members of the Subcommittee, the change that Ms. Hoffman outlined, that the Planning Commission approved last week, gives the zoning adjustment hearing officer, through that use permit public hearing, the ability to reduce that 50-foot setback down to zero, if that is what the agreement and discussion is with the community. So a use permit is a public hearing process, where all the property owners get notified, and the neighborhood associations that are registered with the city within 600 feet are also notified of that public hearing. So it allows for a more tailored application of that 50-foot limit, so that if the community would rather see, for example, a fence that just goes all the way across the entire golf course, you know, 50 feet back from the street, and then connects to those fences that back up to it from the private homes, they could go that route if that's what the community desired to do, but it allows for that tailored approach with public input.
I think, Madam Chair, additionally, that, so the concern, if you looked at some of the, what the villages said was, some people were a little concerned about debris getting trapped in that alleyway, if you will, because you're sort of creating somewhat, it'll be a 50-foot wide one, but an alley between, let's say, the course and the homeowner's fence. And the other question that was raised is how do they maintain their property on both sides of the fence? So when you've got a mower or something, you know, the issue is you've got to mow inside the fence, and you've got to go outside the fence and mow too. And I think those were a couple of the pieces of feedback that some of the villages had. But obviously, you could mitigate those in the way that Mr. Stevenson just described through the hearing process.
And today, the villages also had concern about enforcement of the 50-foot setback, and given how much we have in the budget for different enforcement, that's probably a legitimate concern, so could you speak to that as well?
Yeah, Madam Chair, members of the Subcommittee, part of the reason why it's a one-year approval is that, so we have a regular contact with those property owners, so that if they are not abiding by the rules and regulations, that we'll be able to address it from the enforcement standpoint that way as well, because we won't renew their use permit when it comes up the next year. It won't be an approval that is good forever, and it's stuck on NSD to try and enforce. Ultimately, if they're not successful, you know, it's only good for a year, they'll have to be back again at that point. And we can revoke a use permit as well, if in the interim, there are some problems that are really creating community concerns. It does have to go back through the same public hearing process that we went through to put the use permit on, but the city does have that legally available to us.
On that one, too, right now, NSD already enforces the rules. They're already there. And then the other part of it deals with the year permit, I guess I should have brought that up, too. Right now, they have five years. So if they're caught not following the rules in a five-year period, I would imagine we're out there at least once in a five-year period, then, you know, nothing can occur within five years. This just truncates that time period.
So I want to, I just need to be clear on something. We're able, so someone gets a permit, say, six months in, they're not following what we have outlined, and enforcement comes in, starts to send notices. At what point, he still has another six months, he or she has another six months, at that moment, do we revoke? Or we have the ability to revoke the permit, and then are they fined?
Madam Chair, Councilwoman Pastor, what the city would do is, we would work with the Neighborhood Services Department to first issue them some notice of violations, try and get them to correct the problem like we do in all of our other instances. If they did not correct that, then what we would have to do is initiate a public hearing to revoke the use permit. As part of that, staff would become the applicant, and so we would be responsible for meeting all the notice requirements, you know, doing the signposting, advertising, all that stuff that normally we put on an applicant when they come in and apply. We would take those duties on as the city, and then we would process an application to revoke the use permit. The applicant would get notice of that, they would be able to come to the hearing and say, wait a minute, no, I did comply with, you know, X, Y, and Z, here's what I did, and try and make a case. The majority of time, the threat of revocation has got their attention to ameliorate the condition. And I imagine that with this particular set of circumstances related to a temporary fence, that they would probably do the same thing, because it's going to be cost prohibitive for them to invest in a landscape plan, the rental of the fence, all those things, to then not comply because of some other, you know, issue that the community, that's not being addressed.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Any additional questions?
Not questions, but comments. I appreciate all the work that's been done. We have golf courses in District 5, we have a couple of city courses in Maryville and Palaverdy, and, you know, we're going to continue to work very hard in finding solutions to keep our courses, not only in District 5, but I'm a strong believer in keeping all of our city courses. But I'm appreciative for this change, especially for the private course that's in District 5, in the Vita Paz neighborhood in the far west side of the district there, in the city, off of about 107th Avenue. I am supportive, and if Councilman DeCecio's, I think you made your motion, I'll second the motion.
All right.
I just want to clarify that the motion is to approve it per the Planning Commission recommendation, which adds that the hearing officer discretion on that 50 feet, and recommend approval of that to the full council.
Chairman B.
Yes.
Wonderful. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Thank you.
Can I mention one more thing, too, just so that, and Councilman Valenzuela, you might want to know, it came out of your district, too. Some of the neighbors there were looking at, were checking with law whether or not it works, using the Community Facilities District laws that allow homeowners to be able to purchase the golf course at a low, basically, a low amount. So what they do is they end up taxing themselves on a tax, so then instead of coming up with a million dollars, they come up with maybe $50 a year, is what ends up happening. So we're checking with law right now. It came out of your district. I think I mentioned, I can't remember, it's been a blur these last few weeks. But it gives homeowners and neighbors an extra ability to be able to control their own destiny and be able to work out with the property owner, so that they purchase it, they tax themselves, and instead of coming up with a huge amount of money, they just basically come up with a certain amount of money per year on their property tax.
There's a large number of very active residents throughout the district, but, you know, Vita Paz has been very active, and it's, this golf course issue was used as a catalyst, I think, to really bring everyone together and work hard on this particular issue, so.
And this came out of your direction in your neighborhood, just, you know, and we're looking into that right now. I think that it's legally allowed to do it, there's certain mechanisms and tools that the state law allows, we just need to figure it out with the law department. But then it allows them to engage and be able to literally pick up the golf course themselves and not have to come up with a large amount of money. It's just a small amount of tax that they tax themselves, they create their own taxing district.
No, I appreciate you, yeah, I appreciate you meeting with them, Councilman, they were, we all agreed, I think, we're going to make you an honorary District 5.
No, 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 it's your end over there. I mean, you helped lead that.
I'm glad everybody's working together.
Yeah. All right. Just want to let you know, just for the other two members of the council here that haven't had a chance to see what we were doing on that other part, which literally can revolutionize, revolutionary process, now allows them to control their own destiny, too. Thanks.
Now we will move on to parklets, which people in the committee's been working on for more than a year, so great to have this moving forward.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and Subcommittee Members. With the leadership and direction from Mayor Stanton and the City Council, our staff has been working very hard on infill policies and programs, and we've moved some big boulders, and now we're focused on some of the rocks and the pebbles and the kinds of things that can really make a difference in a community. And other large cities have looked at parklets as a way to make that difference, and our team here, and particularly Cindy Stotler, has been spending a lot of time with our infill advisory group and community members to develop the beginnings of a parklet policy, and we'd like to share with you how that works.
Madam Chair, members of the Subcommittee, real quick, we are here to get some input from you on this particular policy proposal. As Mr. Neymar mentioned, we have met three or four times with our Phase 3 infill study group to work on this parklet proposal, and this is kind of the chance for some big-picture input from the Subcommittee, and then staff will go away and work with the Streets Department and our infill study group to come up with a final policy and process in order to allow these parklets to take place kind of in and around downtown. And with that, I'll turn it over to Ms. Stotler, who's going to walk us through the particulars.
Thank you, Alan. Good afternoon, Madam Chair and members of the Subcommittee. I'm very excited to finally be bringing you the subject of parklets, which we're calling a street oasis, and I think you'll see why. It sounds really nice this time of year. The definition of a parklet, it is a curbside seating platform that converts parking spaces, curbside parking spaces, into vibrant community space. And throughout this presentation, I will have pictures of parklets from other cities, so you can get a feel, look and feel for how they affect the streetscape. This one is in Seattle. The next one is in San Francisco here. Parklets improve the quality of life for pedestrians on a street. They mitigate the heat island effect, they encourage pedestrians to linger, to socialize, to mingle, to buy more food and drink, to maybe explore the retail establishments around. It overall enlivens the streetscape. And the difference a parklet can make in a street is phenomenal, so I have a before-and-after picture for you here. This is in New York City, in front of the Fica Espresso Shop. So this is before after a parklet comes in, and you can see the difference in how much more inviting and welcoming a street can be with a parklet on it versus an empty street. Some other examples that we have from other cities include Philadelphia, Los Angeles, San Francisco. These cities have long-established parklet programs, and you can see from the examples, what you do is you take the basic seating platform and add architectural features, landscape features, shade, furniture, and things like that to make it your own. So it's a wonderful public-private partnership between the city allowing the use of the right-of-way and the adjacent business, basically funding the parklet, but making it their own, and it even can add artistic features to the street, which we could really use here in Phoenix. The city did our own parklet as a demonstration program. This was funded by the Street Transportation Department at Matt's Big Breakfast at First Street in Garfield, if you had a chance to see that. That was built by the city. We have an agreement with Matt's Big Breakfast, they maintain the parklet, they water the plants and everything like that. It's a demonstration project for a national conference of transportation officials, so we could get experience with a parklet, and we could also get their feedback on ideas and continuing on with a parklet policy for us. It's been a very successful demonstration project. If you go by in the morning, there's a lot of people sitting out there. So why are we talking about parklets now? I think you got a kind of a background from Rick and Alan, where we had a lot of input from the public infill meetings that we had last summer. We had about 250 people come to meetings and talk about how we really need to enhance the streetscape and encourage people to walk and linger and mingle and socialize. We have been researching other cities that have parklet programs, and we have had many in-depth discussions with the infill advisory group, Phase 3 group that's meeting monthly. So some of the discussions, we have talked about the beginnings of a policy that we're going to present to you today and ask you for some feedback on what we've talked about. So parklets are basically urban amenities, very urban amenities, that are made for areas with narrow streets, with curbside parking, with low speed limits on streets, so 25-speed limit or less. So when we're talking about where to put parklets and where we think it would be most optimal to have a parklet, especially when we're rolling out a pilot program, the infill advisory group and the staff recommend the downtown code area, which is basically bordered by Buckeye to the south, McDowell to the north, 7th Street and 7th Avenue, and we threw in Grand Avenue, based on all those improvements that we've done, the street transportation's recently done, Grand Avenue from Van Buren up to Roosevelt, where they have already narrowed the streets and created the perfect opportunity for parklets in those curbside Other location criteria, again, learning from successful programs in other communities and some commonalities that they've had. Parklets should be within existing parking spaces in the right-of-way, so no more than six feet deep, two spaces or more wide, maximum speed limit of 25 on the street, that's just for the safety of the folks in the parklet, and minimum spacing from things like water meters, manholes, loading zones, bus stops, and things like that. So we're looking at throwing those things in the policy. We wanted to make this convenient for people to apply, so we created a, or we're thinking of creating a free review of the initial application, so letting people, businesses that are thinking about doing a parklet, put in their fact-finding application with actually the Planning and Development Department. We will work with the Street Transportation Department and review their application. So before they put any money into design, we would allow them to come in with maybe their own hand drawing, just showing us the dimensions, what we're thinking, the location, and any distances from things like bus stops and manholes and things like that, so we could do an evaluation, go out and look at it, talk to them, and see if it was an appropriate place before they put any money into it. Once we approve the proposed location, then they can proceed with their formal application. One of the things that we found in other cities is mandatory community support. We want to make sure, we're taking away two parking spaces at least, so we want to make sure that A, the city can do without the revenue, and B, that the neighbors agree that this is a good use of the space and that they will not unduly be hurt by the loss of parking spaces. So we're asking for community support in the support of the adjacent businesses on either side of you, if you are the business looking to create the parklet, and at least 51% of the folks on the same block. And this was kind of a middle ground, that we heard different cities have different, more stringent policies. San Francisco requires public notice and a hearing if there's any opposition. Other cities just require the adjacent neighbors, so this was kind of something in the middle, but we're certainly open to discussion on that. Final approvals, we would be looking at construction plans and permits, so the application would come in through Planning and Development, because that's what we do, is construction plans and permits. We are going to develop a standard for the platform and the railing, which would give folks a head start, and they wouldn't have to design a standard, the platform and the railing, and they would only have to put money into the design of the artistic elements or the landscape elements or shade elements that they want to add. So we're trying to reduce the cost for them. It's also easier for us to do a plan review if we already have the design laid out for them with certain structural standards and things like that, to make sure that the drainage is still happening under the street, and the gutters aren't blocked, and things like that. We would issue a revocable permit from the Street Transportation Department for the use of the right-of-way. This is a common permit that we require for use of the right-of-way, and part of that revocable permit would include a maintenance and operation agreement with the business to make sure they keep it clean and keep the plants watered, keep the furniture out, if it's movable furniture, and keep the shade elements in place. We're looking for a bond, in case the city has to remove the parklet in an emergency basis, or if the business goes out of business and we have to pay for removal, we would call in that bond. We're also looking for insurance from the adjacent business, in case something happens on that parklet, that they are covered and it doesn't come back to the city. We're exploring the fees, that's still in development. We're trying to keep the plan review and permit fees to a minimum in the Planning and Development Department. We're looking at the cost of the revocable permit, that would be re-upped annually, so we could have a chance to look and make sure that they're keeping up with their maintenance operation agreement. We may or may not have to remove the parking meters and move those, so that would be another fee, and then any restriping we would have to do, or anything like that. So again, the fees are still up in the air that we would be exploring later on. Reasons for permit revocation, because it is a revocable permit, it is in the right-of-way, any misuse of the park, you know, using it to serve alcohol or something like that that's not allowed by law, anything like that, failure to maintain the Failure to maintain the parklet in keeping with your maintenance and operation agreement or any safety concerns that we have, maybe with the police department's findings or anything like that. If the owner goes out of business, obviously, we would revoke the permit and call in the bond and take the parklet away. Other than that, that's all the discussions we've had with permit revocation, but that's why we're going to have it renewed every year so we can have a chance to review it and make sure it still should be an active parklet. So we talked about options. You can see by all the photos and all the different kinds of parklets that we have out there in other cities, there are many, many options to have. And one of the options that has been significantly discussed in the infill advisory group is the option to make it public or private. If it was private, it would be controlled by the business and used for serving food or non-alcoholic beverages. Alcoholic beverages are absolutely forbidden because you have to cross the right-of-way, the sidewalk, so you cannot serve alcoholic beverages. Yeah. But you could serve food and non-alcoholic beverages. If you're a coffee shop or something like that, you could serve across that and have customers over there. I will tell you that in our research of other cities, parklets are generally public. They're open seating. That's why they're called a parklet, because they're like a park. They're a community space, open seating at all times, and the business cannot control it. And staff is not taking a side one way or the other. There are pluses and minuses on both sides. One of the concerns, and you may hear from speakers later, is that, you know, Phoenix is a new opportunity for Phoenix, and we don't necessarily have a whole lot of pedestrians and a whole lot of successful long-term businesses that would be willing to lay out the funding for something like this. And it will cost maybe up to $20,000, depending on the architectural features and things that you want to put into your parklet. So it's a significant investment for a business. And the thought on the private side is that they may not be willing to put that money out unless they had control of the business. The concerns are, you know, vagrants using it and sleeping there at night, or misuse by the public and not being able to control that space. You would be able, whether public or private, you'd be able to use it for a temporary use for a special permit, maybe on the art detour night or something like that. If everyone's out on the street, you could get a special-use permit and actually serve alcohol and use that for that several times a year. Other options that have been discussed and talked about, whether to make them mandatory or optional, are, you know, landscape elements. There's a lot of concerns about having shade and having plants that are more inviting in the street. Furniture and seating, lots of discussions about whether or not to have permanent furniture and seats. As you see here, there's a mix of permanent benches and removable seating. The removable seating is generally controlled by the adjacent business, and they take it in and out during their business hours so this doesn't get stolen, obviously. We talked about shade elements, whether we should require shade elements, which seems, you know, in Phoenix, it's pretty much mandatory to have shade elements. Should those be permanent, like a sales structure maybe off of the parklet or umbrellas that are controlled again and removed by the business? All of those still up in the air, and we're looking for feedback and ideas over the summer while we're creating the policy. So that's the end of the presentation. We are looking for direction, looking for your thoughts on the public versus private issue and any other of the options that we have talked about in the parklets.
Wonderful, thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the Subcommittee, real quick, in that public-private discussion, if we do have a private one, the city would be looking to charge more, a little bit more for that type of application because it's privately controlled, because ultimately it is the public right-of-way that is there. But that is something that if it goes forward and either scenario is allowed, if it was a privately-done one, we'd be looking to charge a little bit more for that because it is using the public right-of-way for that, you know, more public kind of business purpose.
Wonderful, thank you. So we are lucky to be joined by many people who are involved with coming up with the policy and have several comment cards on this item. So I'm going to go ahead and take the comment cards first. Beatrice Moore.
Beatrice Moore, 1025 Grand Avenue. I've been involved with the Lower Grand Avenue District for many years, since 1992. And I think this is a very positive policy that's moving forward. I have a few questions that I would like for you to consider. One thing, you said, Lauren, the speed limit's 25 miles per hour. Speed limit currently along Grand Avenue is 35 miles per hour. So we would love to see it lowered, frankly, because people still speed along Grand a lot, and it's actually, the traffic's moving too fast. But as far as lowering it to 25 miles per hour, is that something the city's really going to do? The insurance, I have a question about that. If the property owner is expected to provide insurance, this is no different than having the parking spot there now. I mean, their liability now is the city's in the parking spot. So the uses perhaps will be a little bit different, but if the property owner is expected to pay insurance for these scheduled events and whatnot, that sounds very complicated. I mean, I don't think the property owner should have to pay insurance for private events that are being scheduled by the city, so that's something to take into consideration. I think in certain situations, the property owner is expected to provide, list the city as additionally insured in certain situations. So I'm assuming that, in this case also, the city would still have insurance? That's a question. And the property owner is just listing the city as additionally insured on the policy? Let's see. Another suggestion might be to have furniture that folds up and locks at night, where you have the seat fold up and it locks. So I think you could have some permanent features for permanent furniture, and also, obviously, people want to have furniture that they can take in at night. And I personally am in support of everyone being able to use these. I think personally that's a better model, that they're open to the public. And generally, parks are, and I think that's a much more welcoming environment. And all of us have to deal with the transient situation every day in our neighborhoods, and we have ways of dealing with that, is just being vigilant and calling the police. And people can't sit there and drink. Drinking from an open container is against the law. So things like that, you know, just basically, it's no different than what we do every day. Thank you very much for considering this. It's a great policy.
Thank you. Do you want to answer the question about, I don't think, well, Grand Avenue's speed limits and whether this would be compatible with the current speed limit?
Madam Chair and Subcommittee members, speed limits are set through the Street Transportation Department, and when they reduce or increase speed limits, they actually get approved by the City Council in an ordinance. And we can take a look at the speed limit along Grand, but I think that the point is well-taken. If we're proposing to put parklets on Grand and our limit of where you can put a parklet requires a 25 mile-an-hour speed limit, you're not going to get anything on Grand unless we lower the speed limit. So we'll do an evaluation of that particular street and make a determination as to whether or not we ought to lower the speed limit there. Or likewise, I think we can have a little more dialogue between the Street Transportation Department and Planning and Development about whether 25 is too low of a speed limit for some of the streets in the downtown core area that might be good places for parklets.
And perhaps you could also look into whether if we have parklets on faster streets that maybe we require additional safety features, like cement planters or something, that might help make it a safe environment on a faster street.
May I follow up on that? I agree with the Chair on this sheet. You could put in extra safety features and maybe allow the hearing officer to allow it on a case-by-case as well. I mean, this is one of the things, especially on the Grand Avenue that we have closer to downtown. That is a perfect place for these parklets to be able to come into. Perfect place, but, you know, one requirement, the 25 mile-an-hour becomes problematic for that, obviously. So there should be some, you know, some leeway there. The other is, once you start putting in so many requirements upfront, great ideas turn out to be flops because it doesn't allow people to really start getting out there to start putting that in there. So from my end, too, you know, the requirements are fantastic that you're doing, that you have here, but once you start putting too many in there, then it doesn't become functionable for a property owner or a business owner.
Great. I have a question regarding public safety. How is police and fire being informed or working with this team regarding public safety and getting to, or something happens, 25, they're going to go down Grand? I mean, I think it's a great, I think you're looking for guidance from us in order to develop a really good policy. It's just me thinking in a very holistic manner of all the different dynamics, and I'm assuming, and I'm making a big assumption, so you can correct me if I'm wrong, that number of departments are going to be part of this dialogue and part of this policymaking. Okay.
Yes, Madam Chair and Councilwoman Pastore, you are correct. A number of departments are going to be involved this summer in the actual policymaking. A lot of the discussion's going to have to be about, you know, the enforcement of the maintenance and operation agreement and the subject of transients and other things on it. And so that all involves other departments in the city, Police Department, Downtown Security, and things like that. And so, yes, we will definitely talk to everyone and try to address everyone's concerns.
Perfect, thank you. Wonderful. Tim Igo?
My name is Tim Igo, 926 West Portland Street in Phoenix. I'm also the Chair of Downtown Voices Coalition, and I'm privileged to be on the infill advisory group. I can't remember if it's a group or a committee. And I'm very pleased to see this move forward. I think parklets are going to be an important part of downtown vibrancy. I am concerned, and Cindy alluded to the conversation that occurred in the group, I am concerned that it's coming to you, this report stating upfront that parklets are either public or private, when in fact, in every single other instance of peer cities that city staff looked at, every single one, they are purely public. Now, I do know that, I have heard that there are a few other cities, maybe you might hear about Park City, Utah. I've heard that Long Beach has one, maybe one, private parklet. But these are public spaces that, in this pilot project, I think, should launch by using the laboratory that every other city has already done for us and shown they've worked as purely public spaces. I recall, one concern that I've heard voiced is that these are new, people aren't comfortable with them. The very first parklet occurred in Los Angeles in 2005. These are all new. Every city is new to this. This is not really, we're not different in that regard. And they came out of the Parking Day Movement, which I know many of you are familiar with, the City of Phoenix participates in. That's a public event that gets butts in those spaces, it gets the public engaged. It's not about handing over public amenities to private interests. And, you know, I can certainly understand that I would like a cafe outside my space if I had a cafe, but that is not the need that's going to be filled. Nearly every city requires a parklet to be operated for public use. This is about a hands-on approach to the public realm. So I guess I would say that Arizona businesses, I believe, are not really different from businesses in all the other peer cities. They also have seen increased business, but with public parklets. They did not need to make them private to see all boats rise. And as a pilot program, I would recommend we move forward as every other city has seen success as public. If we discover, for some reason, that Arizona businesses are different from every other business in the country, and for whatever reason they don't feel like this contributes to them and the community, then perhaps the pilot program can be tweaked to become, to include private parklets. So, thank you.
Have you heard from any downtown businesses who'd be willing to support it as a public park?
I have not, and I don't think that conversations occurred. And, you know, frankly, it's hard for me to wrap my head around putting out that kind of investment if I were a businessperson as well. And yet, we haven't done the work to see, why is it succeeding in these places? Why are these businesses putting out $10,000 to build something? Well, I presume that their sales are going up. So I think we have more work to do, but as a first step, I would recommend they be public. They're parks. Thank you.
And our good fortune, we have another Tim who is a downtown business owner who might be at the perfect time to help us with that insight in addition to whatever else he has to offer. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of your Subcommittee. My name is Tim Sprague, 747 Grand Avenue. Tim Igo's a good buddy of mine. We served on this infill committee together. We served on Downtown Voices together. And yes, I'm on Grand Avenue. Our office is there. All of our chips are on the table on that place. I would suggest that the City Council look at this from both perspectives. I'm going to debate Tim on this. I think there really should be the opportunity for somebody to have either public or private. The way that the recommendation is being put forth is that the adjacent property owners have to agree, and then you have to have 51% of the people on your block. I think that's a good governor in terms of whether it should be private or not. The public, the Park City example that Tim spoke about, I've personally seen it. The Main Street in Park City is absolutely alive with activity, and the restaurants use that as additional dining space. And it's remarkable how it makes that place come alive during the course of the summer. What I think that we should also look at, we have an interesting dynamic in some of our streets in that the right-of-way is so large, especially on Grand Avenue, that there's space between the sidewalk and the actual back of curb, that we also ought to look at that also being included as part of a parklet, that if somebody didn't want to go to the expense to get out into the actual parking spot itself, that that business owner that's there adjacent to that ought to be able to consider filling in, in Grand's case, it's decomposed granite, of doing something, building a platform there. I really think the most important thing is that I am so glad to see our city be progressive. This is something that we need to be doing. We are enlivening our streets, and the impact to our neighborhoods has been incredible with all the kind of work we focused on it. We've got seven new businesses on Grand Avenue since we've put in the Green on Grand Project, and this is just a next step for us to be able to continue that. And I would say, let's go forward and let's give a choice between public and private. And it's difficult for me to see, you know, a lot of difference between Pizza Bianco being in a public space and paying money to the city and all kinds of concessionaires that you'd have that use public property. This is a similar-type situation. So I'd encourage you to enact it. Thanks.
He mentioned parks becoming, coming alive during the summer in Park City. Do we have any sense of whether the demand would be seasonal or most people would want to be there year-round? I suspect not in the summer here.
We suspect the same as well, Madam Chair. But we don't have any hard numbers to substantiate. We just believe that by virtue of our weather, that they're going to be very popular, you know, during the winter and fall months, and somewhat popular in some of the summer months. If it's like a Matt's Big Breakfast type where you have nice, you know, web people waiting in the morning when it's not too hot, they'll probably use it. And then same with other places that may be using it in the late hours, will probably be a little more active at that time in the summer as well.
Wonderful. Could we get feedback from the downtown business community about whether seasonal pricing would be useful or not? I know there will be some brave folks who will want to be there year-round, but I suspect there's some people who might want to be there just during events, and there may be people who just want to be there for one week during the Super Bowl, perhaps. So it will be interesting to see. I hear we may be closing down some streets anyway, and so maybe that'll give us some opportunities then as well. We also have, Jim McPherson is here in favor of the, but did not request to speak, so thank you for your, did request to speak. We would love to have you speak, yes.
Madam Chair, members of the Committee, Jim McPherson, 914 East Osborne, Midtown resident. And as a downtown supporter, I do support this, working with both Evans Churchill and Grand Avenue. And I'm just thinking ahead, planting the seed, that possibly, you know, after the phase, after this pilot program, is we think about the other districts. We have the North Mountain Redevelopment Area under study. We have the Reinvent Phoenix Plan underway. So maybe there's an opportunity for parklets to at least be thought about in that context for future use, even on, in Arcadia, there's some spots that may be. So think about this holistically, citywide, as a benefit to all residents of our city. Thank you.
Would you recommend we do a broader pilot or just?
No, not yet. Work on this.
Okay.
Yeah, but just down the line.
Great idea, thank you.
I think we pilot first and then we expand out.
I thought that was what he was saying.
To see if it's working.
Yeah.
Madam Chair, can I? If we wanted to do a public parklet, where would the funding come from? And then who would identify those locations?
So, Madam Chair and Councilwoman Pastore, as for a public parklet, are you talking about a city-funded public parklet? It would have to come from some...
It would have to come from someone's budget in the city.
Okay.
To create it.
Okay.
So let me give an example. We were approached recently by somebody who has some connections to a foundation or funder that may want to give money to the city to build a parklet in a couple of spaces that actually are adjacent to the good building across the street that are currently bagged meters anyway for online security reasons and other reasons. So, you know, that may be an example where we would actually build the parklet and maintain it ourselves with funding that came from the private sector to the city. We haven't allocated, other than the one demonstration project that we did, we're not planning to allocate city money for these, although there's nothing that prohibits us from doing so. Remember, we're also losing the revenue from that meter that is not going to be operational as well.
It's kind of, yeah.
Right.
Okay. And the experiment at Matt's Big Breakfast, how's that, I mean, what's the feedback on it? They love it? Some of the challenges?
The feedback has been very good. We have heard from the public that they really do like having that amenity there. We did hear from one of our infill group members, other than Mr. Igo, about the concerns, particularly with Matt's Big Breakfast one, about how the furniture is taken away in the early afternoon, and they're a resident of the Roosevelt Row area, and they wish that it was out later on in the afternoon. Let's see, that's kind of the one, you know, negative comment that we've received about. I don't know if Cindy had any, heard any other negative concerns.
Former Councilman Simplot's office is across the street from there, and he's mentioned many times to me how excited he is to have that across the street, that it just creates a sense of vibrancy. Now, in this particular case, people were waiting outside there anyway because it's a popular business without a lot of waiting area on the inside, but it just makes it much more inviting for people.
So do we know if the owners then would apply to have a parklet there? I mean, because that would be a private, I'm looking at as a private, or how would that work?
No, it's not a private parklet. It's currently a public one, but they agreed to do the maintenance, just like other public parklets would be handled.
Okay, got it. That's what I was curious about. Thank you.
And Nicole Underwood is here in favor of the item, but does not want to speak. Councilman Sisio?
I do. I think this is just a fantastic thing for the City of Phoenix. It changes the dynamics in the city. It encourages small business owners to reinvest in their community. At the same time, allows them to do better. But what it also does is it creates this situation where it becomes more inviting for people to come in. When you start seeing life outside a business rather than inside of it, it creates a different atmosphere. We were talking about, I can't remember who it was I was talking to last week, he says, when you start seeing individuals riding their bike outside, oh, it's the Reading for, Writing for Reading organization that I went out and distributed some books for, it was in Councilman Okowski's office, but they said, when you start seeing a family outside riding their bikes, you know, with activity on the outside, it has a whole different connotation and it has a whole different feel to it. So when you start seeing individuals outside, it looks inviting, rather than having everybody inside their buildings, and this moves them outside, especially in the tough areas, not tough, like tough areas in the sense where your parking is limited or your buildings are small. That's what I meant. The other is, I really like the idea of being able to move into the other districts because every one of us has an area to do that. I don't know how the motion will come down, but I'll at least give you my preference of where I'd like to see this go. One, I think that the compromise, either go public or private, makes sense. Whenever you've got something this neat, this great, I think, for the City of Phoenix to move forward on, you've got to allow it, to see what the market allows out there, the economics allows out there. And you don't want to put in so many restrictions right off the bat that it prevents people from doing things. As it goes through, especially in the pilot program, you can start readjusting, too. So my viewpoint would be to allow the public and the private options to be in there. The other is, this Grand Avenue, didn't know about it until today, but it is such a huge opportunity for the city and for those business owners, and whatever you can do to include them in there and allow some leeway. And then also look at the item that was brought here about the right-of-way. If that would be able to be expanded in a Grand Avenue setting where, you know, obviously if you're at 35 miles an hour, which nobody I know drives 35 miles an hour on Grand Avenue, even though with the time lights. But maybe you put in extra safety features, as Councilman Gallego had mentioned, to put in upfront with, you know, those concrete barriers, allowing that to work out. But I think that there's a lot of room in here to make it work. Again, I can't emphasize this enough, you want to make it successful, then readjust afterwards. Thank you.
And maybe we could answer the question about right-of-way on larger streets, if this is the policy that would do it, or if we would have other tools that would be best for sidewalks or large right-of-ways?
The Street Transportation Department does have the ability to license other rights of ways, so I can't imagine this would be necessarily prohibited if there was enough room for pedestrian and accessibility access along the sidewalks themselves. So I think it would be totally reasonable for us to explore the ability to use a portion of the, what do I want to say, behind-the-curb right-of-way, to the extent it doesn't impede pedestrian traffic, in addition to the adjacent parking space for this. Do you all see any challenges with that?
No, I think that's something we can easily explore with the Street Transportation Department. The process that we'll be using is a revocable permit process that they currently administer through streets, and we'll be helping them with this particular function, but it allows them to look at that and all of the right-of-way and what's being used there to figure out exactly what makes sense for that particular site.
There are currently, in the downtown area, rules and regulations regarding outdoor dining as well, and so we'll have to make sure that these mesh appropriately if that's the use that we're talking about. And again, you haven't as a committee yet landed and said, public or private, but in terms of if it were a private use, there are specific rules about that as well.
The parklets with which I'm most familiar in San Francisco, and there's a lot of, that appear to be sponsored by a restaurant, but I think they're still public, although almost everyone who sits there seems to have products purchased from that restaurant. Is that an accurate understanding of? Yes, Madam Chair, that is the most common use of parklets across the nation is, and they, you know, our research shows that they are more successful when they are instigated and funded by the adjacent business and connected to the adjacent business. They take more of an ownership responsibility. They decorate it, they maintain it. It becomes, you know, known as part of that business, and those are more successful. We've seen, the City of Boston tried to create their own two parklets last year, and no one sat in them. And there were many, many reasons, design issues and other things, not enough community involvement, not enough connection with the vendors and the businesses along the street and things like that. So we want to make sure that we use that knowledge and do it right when we do it. So it does seem to be much more successful when it's initiated by the business and becomes part of that business and people associate it with that. But in many of those cases, it's still a public. Still a public parklet, yes. So, like, my recollection was in San Francisco, anyone could sit there even if you didn't have products from the business, but it appeared to be that most people who decided to use it were. Yes, so many of the businesses have seen significant increases in their business when it's just like an expanded seating opportunity. It's almost like being next to a park with seating. So people come in and get their food to go, especially if the weather's very nice, they can get their food to go and just go out there and eat and meet friends and linger, as we talked about. So it's a great space for that, and it does help that business and increase that business. It's been shown to do that. Great. And could you take us through again, just, Park City has private parklets, but some of the other cities that do private parklets? Madam Chair and members of the Subcommittee, I was only able to find that one. I, most of the cities, the San Francisco, Philadelphia, Los Angeles, Seattle, Portland, Miami, all are public-only parklets. So the other larger cities and their larger programs are public-only parklets. Because my sense is that they were branded, but, I mean, they looked like they were part of the business, but they were still public space and that that was pretty successful. So I have a preference for public parklets. And in addition to that, I can, you kind of could see on the pictures, some of the rules and regulations with those other cities require a sign that says "public parklet" on the parklet, so people understand that they can come and sit there, and it's open to the public. Excellent. All right. Any further questions, or shall we entertain a motion to move forward?
I know we're talking about public-private, you need some guidance. So since this is, to me, very new and piloting really and experimenting, I'd rather stay in a very incubator state right now and let it roll out piece by piece as to experiment with the public and then look at it and move it then to the private, or we could look at it simultaneously. I don't know what type of guidance you're needing in the sense of, are you asking, do we look at both? Do we experiment with one, or you want us to give that type of guidance? Okay.
Because we could also ask staff to talk with some of the actual downtown businesses and get feedback from them about.
Could I, you know, I don't mind putting a motion out, too. Maybe we experiment with both and see which ones hold and which ones, you know, especially if you're in an incubator stage. So I don't mind putting a motion, if you don't mind, that we allow basically experimentation for both, to see where it is, talk to the downtown business owners, see what they're willing to do, what their preferences are, come back to us, and what do you think, about six months or so, would that work, or?
Maybe we don't need to put a timeline on the motion.
Oh, okay, okay. Or whenever you.
If there's a clamor from downtown businesses, move more quickly.
Yeah. Madam Chair, members of the Subcommittee, we intend to come back to you probably in September with the final policy. This is just kind of the big picture, and then we're going to go away and work on all those details with police, fire, streets, get all that stuff worked out, and then we'll come back with the final, you know, policy for you guys at that point.
That's faster.
And we'll also talk to the downtown business, you know, get a little wider outreach to them to make sure we get some input from them, and then we can report back on this kind of public-private and what we've heard from them as well.
And then if you, kind of, just a couple more things, too, and I'd like to make sure that the Grand Avenue is included in that somehow, that there might be enough in that area that you've picked out as the pilot area, that there be given enough leeway to the administrator who's going to be making the decision on the permitting, that they include the right-of-ways that might be in there for the sidewalks and others that could be used as well. And that we really look at this 35 mile an hour, if there are safety measures that we can put in place that allows it up to a certain point. Obviously, when you look at the map, I don't have it, but that's okay. As you get further west, northwest in there, too, it kind of gets you out of that downtown Grand areas anyways, but it gives you a chance for revitalization for some, a lot of, a lot of those properties up and down that area, which I think is real exciting. And especially in the downtown. And then one last thing, too, is how this could move, not that it needs to be done in September at all, but I really would like to explore the opportunity to come into other districts and some other areas. And that 25 mile an hour is probably going to be problematic in some areas, you know, even if we were to do some of this in Arcadia or some of the Biltmore area, North Central, that will be problematic, just because nothing's 25 miles an hour, you know, other than a couple residential streets would do that. So I think with Councilman Gallego's idea of putting in some of those safety features are things that I'd like to really take a look at because of how we might be able to expand this. Otherwise, we'd never be able to expand it, even out to District 3 in some of the places in Sunny Slope for Councilman Gates, or even in Waring or Felder Williams area around Metro Center. So that would be part of my motion there, too, if that helps put something on the table.
Is that a motion that staff was able to?
Yes.
Capture.
Between the three of us, we've got them.
I have a question that I'm just thinking right now. Bike lanes. How does this affect the bike lanes?
And Madam Chair and Councilwoman Pastor, the bike lanes are outside of, in most of these cases, the bike lanes are outside of the parking spaces. If you see examples of complete streets in other cities, you'll have the curb, the parking spaces, and then the bike lanes behind that. So this would not affect those.
So I could possibly be sitting, and then a bike just goes whizzing by me. Okay. I'm just visual, I'm just.
So a great example actually is Grand Avenue, where we just did put in bike lanes. And there was a lot of debate about whether bike lanes go next to the curb and the parking goes on the other side. In the case of Grand, the bike lanes are on the street side of the parking spaces, so if you took a parking space out and turned it into a parklet, it would be the next thing next to the bike, to the parklet, and then the lane of traffic. So it actually works in that case. It's a little more complicated if you've got to cross a bike lane to get to the parklet from the sidewalk, but I'm sure there are places that do that as well.
I was just curious.
All right. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you so much. Thank you to the infill advisory group and everyone who's been working on this project. Future agenda items include the process for plotting neighborhoods and notifying neighborhoods, graffiti updates, and work on blight-related issues. Does anyone else have any additional future agenda items? All right. We do not, we do not have any additional cards from the public, so with that, I will adjourn.
Thank you.